Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 20th Millis School Committee meeting. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All of the meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under the School Committee section. To start the meeting off, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Ms. Roach will be absent tonight. Superintendent.
She's here.
Mr. Catalano.
Present.
Ms. Sewell will also be absent tonight. Teacher representative, not tonight. Student representative, Mr. Price is here with us. Thank you. Jody, do we have anyone sign in for open session?
We do.
Okay. Then we will start off with our action item, consideration to approve the 3-6 2018 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the March 6, 2018 Millis School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Josh, we'll turn it over to you for updates.
All right. Shrek, the performance of Shrek started last weekend on Friday and Saturday, and then the second two dates haven't happened yet. It's this Friday, March 23rd, and this Saturday, March 24th. Due to snow, the NHS induction ceremony was supposed to happen tomorrow night, but is instead being moved to March 27th at 7:00 PM, which is next Tuesday. As well, Mr. Mills has been postponed. It will probably be in April, but the date isn't definite yet. Five Millis Destination Imagination teams are moving on to states after going regionals. Millis Safety Day is on Saturday, March 24th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then the Youth and Government Club has a conference from March 21st to 23rd, which is tomorrow to Friday, at the Omni Parker House in Boston. It's also part of its taking place at the State House.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Josh.
All right. Right to the time of day.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to invite the Guidance Department from the high school to come on up and join us and grab one more chair there behind. We thank you very much, because I know it's a very busy time of year. We have Riley Dunn now. Congratulations on your new name and marriage. Mark O'Dicki and Melanie Steves, our 21st Century Careers Coordinator.
I want to talk about career development at Millis High School, and more specifically, what we as the school counseling department, and our 21st Century Careers Coordinator, are doing to help our students explore and meet different careers and develop the knowledge in schools that will help them to be successful after high school. So just quickly, we as school counselors have three roles in that school. So Mark and I provide personal counseling, just all the mental health stuff, any issues with friends, stuff that's going on at home with family. We've got a lot of day-to-day things that come up, and then we also have students who we help with their mental health regularly, along with the Adjustment Counselor. And then we also do academic counseling. So within this next month, we'll be sitting down individually with every single student to choose their courses for next year. We'll talk to all the students about their options and help them kind of navigate, you know, what's going to be the best fit for them throughout the school year. We continue that process. We help students communicate with their teachers. We help students who are struggling, whether it's needing a counselor, or sorry, needing a tutor, or just kind of figuring out how to strategize and what to do when you're falling behind in a class. And then our kind of final role as counselors is post-secondary planning, which is really just a fancy word of saying, helping to prepare our students for life after high school. And a big piece of that is career development. So we really try and do our best to teach our students about all the options that are available to them and all the different things that they have to take into consideration when thinking about careers for their future. So we thought it'd be helpful, we want to talk about some of the events and activities that we have been having recently, but we thought it'd be helpful to just quickly run through our guidance curriculum, just the career pieces of that curriculum, so that you understand what we're doing with each grade and freshman year. We go in three times to classes with the freshmen, and a lot of the focus is of relationship building and adjusting to high school. And we do want to help them kind of change their mindset from that middle school and elementary school mindset, which is, you know, learning and getting those grades and making your parents happy. And there's still that in high school, of course. We also have a major focus in high school of preparing them for their future. So this is really their final launch pad before adulthood and before whatever the next step is. So they really, we really try and gear them up and help them focus on making the most of the next four years. We talk to them about the fact that they are now building their permanent record, their transcript and their GPA, and sort of things that they can do to make sure that at the end of their four years, that transcript and that GPA is something that they're proud of. All freshmen create four-year plans, so they get to choose from all the classes that are available in the high school and really start to think about what might they want to take when they're seniors. If they want to take AP Literature and they're in CP1 English freshman year, maybe they want to bump up to honors sophomore year. So we have them actually choose all the classes that they think they're going to want to take throughout high school, just to kind of get them thinking about how to really make the most of it. And part of the four-year plan is also thinking about what clubs and sports and different activities they're going to want to do throughout high school, so they actually map that out as well. And we have a lot of conversations around making the most out of high school and really finding opportunities to get involved in those clubs and those sports and doing community service, not only because their resume builders, but also to expand their knowledge and explore their interests and really figure out what they love and how to make the most of their strengths and their skills. And then they also all complete learning style inventories and get to know their own learning style and how that affects their learning and their working with their peers and how different learning styles can kind of work really well together, and sometimes they can clash and how to control that. So that's some of the big career focuses in our freshman curriculum. In 10th grade, all students complete the Myers-Briggs Personality Inventory, and they find out what their four-letter personality type is using Naviance, which is this awesome website, but it is our favorite tool in guidance. It's again, that's how they make their four-year plans as well, so it's really something that they use throughout high school, and everything is saved in there, so they can kind of go back and look at it. So yeah, they do their personality inventory, they find out the personality type. From there, in Naviance, they can see the careers that are a good fit for their personality. They can see what majors they might want to major in to get themselves to those careers that they think they're interested in, what colleges that have those majors. And there's just tons of information available in Naviance. And then we also help them understand the other things to take into consideration when thinking about careers. So it isn't just about finding something that's a good fit for your personality, it's about, you know, figuring out what your work values are. Are you somebody who wants a nine-to-five job? Do you want a job that's going to require you to travel a lot? How much money are you going to make? What type of a lifestyle is that going to provide for you? What is the job outlook for that career? So is there opportunity and growth in that career field? And just a couple of graphs that we included in our presentation. On the left there is a graph of the unemployment rate depending on degree, educational attainment, and then the median income depending on educational attainment. So the highest degree is at the top. And so, yeah, we're trying to show students that education, while it can be expensive, can definitely compete in the long run. And then on the right-hand side is a list of the 20 fastest-growing careers in 2016 to 2017. So again, just thinking about what careers are there going to be opportunity and growth in, is something to take into consideration if you're going to go to college? And whether or not you need to go to college to a career that you're interested in, or do you need a master's degree, do you need a doctorate degree? So all of that stuff, we cram into our sophomore seminars. And then junior year is kind of where, when we really start the action. So the students, junior year, will really need to take the steps that are necessary to get them moving towards their goals. So it's time to take the SATs, it's time to start visiting colleges, it's time to start filling out applications and working on essays. So we walk all students through that process, and we also have a parent night to help the parents understand the process. And we do have individual meetings as well and help students who are thinking about options other than college. If it is something, if you're interested in the military, if you're interested in a career that doesn't require college, it's again, it's time to take action. It's time to reach out to somebody and find out more and make an appointment and do a job shadow. So yeah, and then also junior year, we have, well, this year we have 38 schools that we're expecting tomorrow morning for our junior college fair, which is in the cafeteria. And it's great because it's during the school day, so even those students who are a little scared of college fairs, they have to go. So yeah, we have 38 schools that are coming from, really, most of them are in New England, but we got a few from faraway states as well that are here just to meet with Millis High School students, so. That's junior year. And then senior year, again, is action. We do seminars again with all the seniors, and we do another parent night to go over the process and make sure everybody's on track for their plans after high school. Senior year, there's definitely a lot of individual attention depending on the plan. And this year, we also have the College and Career Help Center, which was essentially just Mark and I were available, and it was announced every Tuesday and Thursday that we would be available for an hour after school in the conference room for students to come work on their applications, write their essays, fill out a job application, do a practice interview, whatever it is, Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. So it was our first time doing that this year, which is great. And then senior year, Naviance is again, the tool that students need to apply to college, and we send the materials through Naviance to college, but all that career, personalized career information, learning style information, all of that good stuff is saved in Naviance for them. And then in terms, we also want our students to stay connected with experiential learning. It's not just learning about these things in our seminar, they've got to go out and get some hands-on learning experiences if they really want to hide out in their different careers and continue to kind of build their strengths and figure out what's going to be a great fit for them. So we are constantly sending out emails, and we also post it on the guidance wall, and we have a folder in guidance with different opportunities, whether they're leadership seminars, the Hobie Seminar is a popular one for our sophomores, different volunteer opportunities, different shadowing and internship opportunities, the tech internship program, we promote it as much as we can think of, as many ways as we can think of to promote it. We tell the students about different career fairs and job opportunities and different summer programs. So we put it all out there, and we do, some students do get involved in it, but we definitely want more students to get involved than we're getting from just starting from class, because they don't, sometimes they're just these awesome opportunities and the students don't necessarily follow up on it. So to kind of bridge that gap, this is where we kind of started a few new things at the high school in the past couple of years. So one of the new things that we're doing is the Small School Big Future Conference. We had our first conference last year, and we just had our second one on March 7th. And the Small School Big Future Conference is on a half-day in March and the entire half-day. And we really wanted to replicate a professional conference. We have 50 people from the Millis community, from our own professional networks, and really beyond, from some of the teachers, family members, and so we have different careers represented, and yeah, 50 outside people. And how the day works, we had a keynote address, and then there's a career fair for 30 minutes, and there are breakout seminars. So there are 30 careers that are just in the career fair, and then there are 20 people who are presenting seminars on a topic of their choosing. And our guideline really is only that it must be something that will benefit our students in their future. So that includes a lot. But it's pretty cool, because seminars not only are those people representing their career and they talk a bit about their career, but then they cover the topic. Like, we had an ER nurse this year who talked about binge drinking stories from the ER. So some of the scary things that she's seen, anonymous cautionary tales for some of our students who are going out to college. So anyways, that's just an example. And the goal, so every student went to the keynote, is in the career fair for 30 minutes with those 30 careers, and then went to two seminars of their choosing. So we really wanted to replicate a professional conference to give our students that experience. We wanted to build community partnerships. So again, we know that people out there want to help kids, and in a lot of ways, they're happy to have people, students, come shadow them, or whatever it might be. They might want to partner with a math teacher here and come in and teach a lesson, but we just want to continue to build those partnerships so that we can have more of those opportunities. Of course, we want them to learn about different careers and learn some different 21st century skills that'll help them in their future. And just to give you an idea of how we kind of made it a professional conference, one of the ways that we did that is through a website schedule, which is pretty cool. The students could log on and they could select which seminar they would want to go to. So let's see, for example, let's do, well, you do that binge drinking stories from the C office, from the ER. So if they hover over the seminar, they can see a brief descriptions of the seminar, the teacher that's going to be in there for classroom management, and then the presenter. And if you were to click on the presenter, you would see then a bio of that presenter. So, and the students were able to sign up ahead of time, and then on that day, they had their scheduling, they knew where they were going. This is a little video that the students actually made during and after the career fair last year, for the conference last year. This is the Small School Big Future Conference. And basically what the conference is, is an opportunity for our students to learn about a variety of different careers. So we have 50 different professionals from the community and beyond coming in to meet with kids or give a seminar on some sort of life or career skill that they think will be beneficial for our kids after high school. We have financial officers and financial workers of all kinds, librarians, attorneys, child welfare and adoption people, a CEO of a special.
And the big thing is you've got to make your own breaks. They're not going to just happen.
Talk to someone from Raytheon and how they're working on long-distance missiles.
The most interesting session that I've been to today was the woman breaking the glass ceiling. It was very inspirational and empowering.
And I just came from the psych workshop, and it was really interesting to see, like, how hard, like, it can be to, like, create, like, emotional, like, relationships with people.
I've looked into insurance and careers and finance, and it's been very interesting.
It's tragic, I tell you. Tragic. Kitty Whiskers.
All right.
Hi, my name's Brendan Corbin. I'm a mechanical engineer for Thermi. I'm here for Career Day and enjoying the interaction with all the students. They've had a lot of great questions and been engaging, and I think curious about what their future has.
Hi, I'm Sandra Lynn Scott, award-winning author and international speaker, and today I'm presenting on, presenting to an audience, and was invited to be a part of this conference and really enjoying it, and really just to tell her we're in confidence this week.
All kinds of people here to help our kids think about the future, and our kids have been great, asking a lot of questions, very successful first conference.
What do I have to offer? Okay? And write down what they said. Fun way to use the words, something, skills for the future that they may not necessarily want to do. We've done that too so far, and then make success, we think. And so of course, we asked our presenters to give us feedback, see if there's anything that we can or should change for next year, and then we also ask for student feedbacks. We just included two pieces from each. So on the top left hand, we asked the presenters, would you be willing to let a student job shadow with you for a day? And then provide your contact information in the following question if you're willing to? And 70, almost 74% of them said yes. So it wasn't all of them, but if that's kind of representative sample of our presenters, that's pretty cool. That's a lot of connections that we have, and we have their contact information, and we can hook our students up with those opportunities. And then down in the right-hand corner, this is the students, and we asked them, did you feel like you learned something valuable today that could help you in the future? And 96.4% of them said yes, which is pretty good. Very cool. So.
Very, very good.
Yeah, so we're really excited about the results. It's nice to not only feel like we're doing something to help them, but also have them recognize that it's something valuable. So yeah, it's the conference, and it was awesome to have Melanie's help this year with it, because it is a big undertaking.
Certainly is.
But yeah, and then another thing that we stepped up this year is we've added a 21st Century.
There is quite a lot of work to be done. It's a little year. Just never going to end too long. So I came on in October as the 21st Century Career Coordinator. I have to say, I consider myself to be a very, I have a really special viewpoint on all of this, having a student that graduated in 2015 and having a student who's a member of the class of 2018. So not only, you know, have I made myself really improve the curriculum, but I'm actually a student, a student for my students. So when the opportunity to participate here came up, I knew this was something that I could make a difference, that I wanted to help out and build on how grateful I am to the opportunities that my kids have. So I think really, when Riley mentioned the part about the experiential learning, how to do that leads to all of our students' success, whether it's in elementary, middle, high, or when we get to higher education. And that's the piece that I'm trying to sort of really support to, you know, to the best that I can put up. So this position, as we sort of all saw it after doing a little survey, the landscape of what the faculty were looking for, staff, what students, and what others in the community who have had this position, was really to foster college and career readiness opportunities to support and enhance classroom learning through co-curricular experiences, through experiential learning, and to really act as somewhat of like a clearinghouse. It's clear that these two are at capacity, so, for what they're doing. And, you know, how I saw my role was to step in and to sort of take a little piece of that from them, and just to serve as almost a clearinghouse for all these opportunities for our students. Oh, thank you. So the way I've been doing this, and because it's the first year of this program, it's been really nice that we've had some opportunities to see what's working, what is a different route we might want to take. And so what we came up with is that I am trying to develop a network of partnerships, and those are with the community, they're with local colleges and organizations, in order to tap into some of these opportunities that are already in existence right around us, right, you know, within a quick car drive. So, and that has occurred through Regis College, Dean College has had some opportunities, different organizations within the community. We've also decided collaborating with the Millis High School school counselors and teachers to support as many engaging college and career readiness activities. So that's where I tried to step in and, you know, it definitely, I could help out a little bit, but it is a huge undertaking, and, you know, in the time I was here, I tried to do certainly the most I could. And I'm coming in sort of on the tail end too and trying to help out with some of the, you know, the end process of, you know, really reflecting on the data and reaching out to those people who have expressed an interest in internships. We are also trying, I'm trying to coordinate off-campus opportunities for our students to enhance their classroom learning. This is done through a variety of conferences, 1080 Innovators Experience, a tour, microgroup tour that is right down the street in Medway, I think it's right there, and a number of opportunities it might offer for students if, in fact, college is not going to be the best path for them right after graduation. Incredible opportunities. After the extensive tour they gave us, they provided an entire panel discussion of employees on all the different aspects of that company. And if there was one thing that was just contagious for the students, it was how these guys are not being satisfied with their personal, they were, and how important a piece that is to them. We're also working on organizing career shadow and internship opportunities, one in particular with Milton Pat and Milford. We have started our own sort of partnership with them in hopes of getting some of our students either part-time opportunities or summer internships with them. And they also have a number of opportunities coming up after graduation, once again, for students that might be looking for some different curriculums. And another piece of it is that I've been working individually with students that have been identified by counselors, by the Adjustment Counselor, to identify, once again, to go over sort of one-on-one and almost a personal coaching sort of process of what skills and what interests they have, and how we might find that right now, employment opportunities that will not only benefit them down the road, but for right now, and how might that look next year, work study, really try to link them to experiences that are going to be meaningful for them. So it has been, it's just been an amazing opportunity. Very, very important.
So that's, I think that's the end of our career presentation portion. You guys know, the presentation again, so if you have questions that you want to ask, it's an ask.
I guess, yeah, so one question. I know this focused on the high school piece, but there's a career class that eighth graders are in. Now, can you guys talk a little bit about what that is and how, if that links to this at all?
Yeah, so there is a career UA class, and I teach the career exploration, but it's just a half of a trimester for each student. So it's kind of just like an eighth-grade version of a lot of this stuff that we do, kind of sillier personality inventory, we do, but we go over all of this stuff, and they have all, you know, job outlook and all the different degrees, master's degree, bachelor's degree, associate's degree, those are their vocab words. So, yeah, I kind of go over the same ideas and sort of plant these seeds to get them thinking about this as a career.
Because I just heard about this year. Has it been going on for a while, or is this?
Yeah, it's been since I've been here. It's been 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, that's great. I just had a piece of feedback, so I know a few people that participated in the Small School Big.
Big Futures.
Thank you. It'd be nice if I could remember it. I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work that you did. They said that, and a few of them are folks that have presented at conferences on the professional level, and they said that the amount of organization and the feedback and the reach-out to everybody that was involved was fantastic, and they were very, very appreciative of that. So congratulations. Thanks for, thanks for all of that. Any questions?
No real question, just a comment that I like the approach of looking at, what are you going to do after school? And it's not just, everyone's going to go to school, right? And clearly, we have, we're going to talk a lot, and a lot of our students go, but it's preparing them for the next step, and that may be working and going to school part-time, that may be going to get a specialized degree or certificate and then working. So I do, I think you're being, looking at it from, having seen this, having heard you several years, holistically and kind of, how do we individualize some of our plans for four years for our students? And then what are we doing preparing them so in June of whatever year they graduate, are they ready? I guess on Labor Day after the summer, are they ready for whatever is coming down the road? And that's, is it the right school with the right career path? Is it, I just think you guys are doing great work, clearly overworked, but you're really producing a lot in it. Is it, I just think you guys are doing great work, clearly overworked, but you're really producing a lot in it shows. And I appreciate it, not just as a school community member, but as a resident of the town and with kids in the district too, so, thank you.
I have a quick question. Are kids availing themselves of the Tuesday, Thursday after-school sessions?
It started off well.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask the number two idea. I was waiting for the numbers.
I didn't know, right?
Did you just sit in the room sometimes by yourself going, they're coming?
Oh, yeah, totally. All it is, is that they just come, you know, at lunchtime during their study period. It's like, come during, come during, so we can answer all these questions at the same time, for a group of you at the same time, and you guys can kind of help each other. So, it was our first year doing it, we're hoping to kind of make it, like, we definitely, we usually had one, at least one or two kids, but there were a few times when.
Early, early on, when we had like four or five kids, like, I think they were all amazed that, like, they were all asking the same stuff. So, it was actually kind of like, it was like an overwhelming experience, because they were like, all alone.
Yeah.
Everybody's in the midst of it, trying to get their essays done, and everything. So, everybody was like, basically, they're kind of freaking out about the same stuff. So, they all realized, like, oh, okay, it wasn't that bad, so it was nice when they did that. And I think that little, that little group did kind of keep coming back to us.
Yeah, it's like, kids who did show up realized it was helpful and kept coming back.
Yeah, yeah, we had our own little, we had our own little nice little group, you know? So, you know, it would be kind of nice, but I think it was helpful on them. So, hopefully next year it's more of a, we'll just keep pumping it out and advertising it, and hope that kids this year say, like, you should.
Great. Thank you.
Now, we have the testing report. Class of two seventeen.
You want to sit up there with Mark and Emily?
And you can ask all the questions you want.
Thank you, Charlie. They made fun of me while you were gone.
These are readers. So, the second part of what we wanted to come in and present about tonight was just to kind of look at my profile of the class of two thousand and seventeen. When I was looking at the slides this year, was I had to recreate a little bit, and I had to take off all those silver wall slides from last year.
Oh, God.
Kind of depressing. I probably put just Jack's snowflakes on his issue. I didn't have as many creative pictures to throw on there this year. As I try, we always try to start off and just show you guys a little bit of just what we've heard of so far. And we'd love for the kids to come in and tell us more of the colleges that they've gotten into, because we're in prime time right now for a bit hearing back, because we're in mid-March. This is just kind of a sample of some of the schools that kids have notified us so far that they've gotten into. So, you can see we're kind of all over the place, from Manitoba to Pennsylvania to DC, Delaware, Hawaii.
Is that the first kid from here to go to Hawaii?
Now, I don't know that they're going to go, they got accepted. We had a kid get accepted a couple of years ago as well, and they didn't go, but I don't know why, it sounds awful.
No, no.
So.
No UMBC?
What's happening?
No UMBC?
No, I know, no, UMBC, wait till next year, they'll be out there for next year. Probably the cheapest you'd ever live in Hawaii, too, so. But, yeah, so, anyway, just to kind of show you guys a lot of the schools that kids have gotten to. Obviously, we're waiting to hear back on a lot more than we should in the next couple of weeks. And probably a lot of kids that I don't have up here, because they, as much as they see us in the first, like, few months, they tend to disappear for a little while until they get to decision-making time. So, we'll start to see them again soon when we're trying to figure out where they're going to go. But that's just a sample of some of the institutions that kids have gotten into so far this year. You know, Riley kind of talked a lot about what we do in the counseling office, but just to kind of update you guys as to where we are now with all those different things that we're doing. We've already gone through two rounds of seminars with our ninth graders, and seminars with both our tenth and eleventh graders. We had a junior college planning night, which Riley talked about in February. We were fortunate to, we actually held a little bit of a library this year, and we had representatives from DC, UMass, Roger Williams, Mass Bay, and Suffolk that were there to do a panel presentation on the night. And the feedback that we got from the parents was really good. And I actually, we thought that it was probably one of the better panel nights that we've had so far. We had a great turnout, we must have had probably around like seventy people or so I think that were there.
Oh, that's great.
And students came too, so it was really great to hear from, hear from the experts. It was kind of nice. At our conference, we talked about that. Tomorrow's our college mini-fair, so we'll be ready for that tomorrow. We had to postpone that from last week with the weather, so we're happy with it. Looks like it's holding off till the afternoon tomorrow. Well, we started scheduling with the kids. Next week, we'll do program studies meetings with our ninth grade through eleventh grade students right now. And then we will move on to the eighth graders. We'll have a step-up night for them and their parents on April fifth. And then the following day, the eighth grade students will meet with them, and they'll start doing their scheduling for the following school year. And then I always try to say every year, because I know some people might be watching, is that there are scholarship opportunities in the counseling office, so make sure your kids come down and check out the basket. And I know the local scholarship opportunities will go on, and I want to say at the end of, the end of this month, I think it's the end of this month. I think it's at the end of March, so we can look out for those as well. So, that's just kind of an update on where we are. Just to talk a little bit of the class of two thousand and seventeen. So, it was seventy-seven percent four-year colleges from last year's group, which was pretty much on par with the year before. We had ninety-one percent continuing formal education, so that's either two-year, four-year schools, tech schools, state schools. So, that was the same for the last three years, it's kind of exactly the same, the ninety-one percent. And then, you know, we're almost coming up on twenty years now where we've had that same ballpark, eighty-eight to ninety percent of kids moving on to some sort of continuing education. So, that's clearly, you know, trying, and I think, instead of two, Steve, is that we do still have, ten percent's a lot of our class too, that are moving on to different things as well. So, we're very cognizant of that, and trying to provide kids the opportunities to see what else is out there outside of just having off to two or four-year schools. Looking at competitive level, we use the Barron's Book, which I know isn't perfect, but it just gives you kind of a snapshot of where our kids are applying and the schools that they're getting into. The acceptances in the top three categories that they list, so the most competitive, highly competitive, and very competitive, was up three, three percent, so up slightly from last year's class, about exactly the same, I would say. So, thirty percent of all of our acceptance is a little over a third. The highest category, which was most competitive, was about the same from the class of two thousand and sixteen. That was at five percent, and four percent the year before. And then nine percent, that was up, that was almost double from the class of two thousand and sixteen, and the second highest category, which was highly competitive. So, there's a little bit of a jump there from five percent to nine percent. And then the largest group, which is over a year, comes in that like competitive category. Because that's, you know, if you look at that as like the bulk of a lot of the applications the kids send out, because they, they want to keep that mid-range group of schools in there too. That for some of them are safer, for some of them are perfect fits. But that was fifty-three percent, it was fifty-five for last year. So, overall, the statistics were pretty similar from the year before. So, again, just to kind of give you a little snapshot of this level of admissions for our kids. Geographically, we definitely tended to stay back in the New England states last year. In the last couple of years, kids have kind of branched off outside of New England a little bit. We were homebodies last year a little bit more, because ninety percent of our kids decided to stay at an institution in New England. It was about seventy, seventy-six percent the year before that, so kids were definitely staying closer to home. They were intent, of the outside New England, some of the states that you could look at, the kids went to New York, Pennsylvania, Florida, North Carolina, California, and we actually had a student up in Vancouver, too. So, kids did go to a few different places, just not in as great an environment as they had. Our SATs. So, I know when I was in here last year, we were talking about how the SAT was changing for the class of two thousand and seventeen. There's no longer three separate tests. It's critical reading, math, and writing is not the setup of the test anymore. So, now you have evidence-based reading and writing, and you have math. And so, those are the two sections. There's an optional essay, which at this point, just reading our colleague today, it sounds like there's about twenty-nine schools in the country that are actually requiring the optional essay. And so, Harvard actually this week was, actually dropped it as a requirement for their applications. So, there's a growing movement that they're kind of hoping that other schools might follow suit. Of those twenty-nine schools, I think they said nine were University of California schools. So, really, it's only like twenty schools in the country, but seventy percent of kids last year actually took the essay, because we are recommending to kids to do it just in case, like, they get themselves to a list of schools where, say, one school only requires it, and you want to have it done. So, we're still going to tell the kids that we'd like them to take it. But I have a feeling as time goes on here, that makes itself walk away. But I kind of hope that I will save it, especially with the emphasis that there's been on standardized testing more and more as the last, you know, five or six years has gone on. So, those two sections, it's a little bit more back to, I think, what we do when we were younger. It's two sections on eight hundred, and it's a little bit easier. Even me, for my, I know for Riley, it probably made it like a lot more sense than it did for me. I still, for the last six or seven years, am trying to wrap my brain around twenty-four hundred. So, it's nice to kind of be back with sixteen hundred scale again. The unfortunate thing that you can't really do, as the college board says, you can't really compare to past exams, because the scales and benchmarks are different. I can tell you by like just a kind of a dumbed-down version of trying to kind of figure out where we were at, that our scores looked to be about on par with where they were before. One thing you will see is what the score is now, is that they're definitely inflated a little bit. What probably was in the old SAT, maybe like a five hundred in your critical reading, might equate more now to like a five forty or five fifty. So, scores have jumped up a little bit. That's just, you know, personal observations, some of the things that I've read online. Eighty-seven percent of our class took the test last year, that's about average for us. Usually somewhere in that ballpark, a little bit higher. Our mean score was eleven forty, which was above the mass and national averages. Unfortunately, I can't really compare it to our past scores, but I can just give you a snapshot of where we are in comparison to state and national. For the evidence-based reading and writing, our mean score was five eighty. That was above the mass and national means. As you can see, those were five fifty-five and five thirty-three, so that was, that was solid for last year. The math test score was five sixty, and that was above Massachusetts and national means as well. So, at least in the first year of our kids taking the test, like, we finished above state and national means, which I thought was a positive thing for us to see, especially when you can't compare to our previous classes. But it did make the report a little bit shorter for me, so I'm not complaining, but maybe enough to happen. So, comparison was a little bit more of a challenge this year. And that, for some reason, the DESI website didn't have all of the SAT data up there. But I was able to track down data to a like group of comparison schools from some different methods. So, keeping in mind that we use an average of all of our SAT scores, and the statistics that I see from the schools typically are college board stats, which are a combination of all the SAT scores. That overall, we have the ninth highest overall SAT score at eleven forty out of those eleven total schools. That being said, like, we were only two points away from being in the sixth spot, so really, we were pretty much right in the middle of the pack with those schools. And that dart group has changed a little bit, and you'll see that on your report. There were a few more schools that were added in there that I, you know, King Philip is in there, which is kind of a little bit. Sundown, that's a huge school with, you know, population, I don't know, population of Dover Sherburne's on there now, which again, which is a little bit of a surprise to me from what I know.
Yeah, that doesn't make much sense.
Lake Ryle and everything, and whatnot.
This is not sports, it's cash.
Yeah, it's, I just, demographically, it just seemed a little bit different to me. That's how, that's how DESI showed them on the dart graph, so I included them in. So, you can see, it's like I said, we were fairly close to being like right in the, right in the middle on everything, which I think we basically were. Our evidence-based reading and writing was seventh highest, our math was ninth. And overall, looking at that whole group, we have the smallest number of test takers. So, that's just, just to give you, like I said, I think the comparisons changed in there a little bit. And I, you know, I'm not going to argue with DESI, but I, to me, in my mind, like, I'm not sure that we, that that is a complete, a, a, I don't know how I'm trying to say it, that that's like a representative comparison group as much as it was. There were some schools that were in there that have been in there, that I think probably do make sense. Georgetown and Manchester, Essex, you know, maybe in some ways, Tinsborough, I think West Bridle are a really good situation. So, there were some schools that I think probably there, but there were a few schools that had them this year that just struck me as a little bit funny.
Just to come in on that mark, when we were comparing MCAT scores as well, we noticed, you know, Dover Sherborne. And they seem to base it a lot more on percent of population, size of the district, and also then percent of special ed and ELL students and things like that. And they seem to disregard this year per pupil expenditure, so.
Yeah, which is a kind of an important part.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a bit. So, yeah, thanks, that helps clarify a little bit. So, I think that, but that, I think that kind of puts in perspective a little bit, like, where we ended up on those numbers for the dart scores. So, that's our SATs. This is just the graph that can just at least show you where we were. I think that puts in perspective a little bit more as to how close we were in the middle of the pack there, because eleven forty, you can see the eleven forty-two with Old Rochester, and you can see, like, I mean, that's great for Dover Sherborne, twelve sixty-eights, and it's, that's a massive school, but it's, you know, it'd be a lot of work to get up there. So, SAT subject tests, I know every year I'm going to talk to you guys about this too, that the rates have really declined as time's gone on. We actually had a few more kids taking them last year for some reason than in the past. I'm not even sure that all those kids really used them for admissions, but we had, you know, we had some really high achievers in that class that really just wanted to have them in case they needed them, which was fine. It was six percent more than the class of two thousand and sixteen. I noted on here that as of a couple of weeks ago, that they, they came out, so there's now only, I guess, thirteen schools that actually require subject tests. Nine of those are in the United States, four of those are international schools. I don't know where the subject tests are going to end up in the next, you know, five years or so, but if those numbers continue the way that they are, I think I have a general feeling where they probably will end, which is not a good state. So, for us, that's just a list of some of the exams that our kids took, biology, chemistry, English, lit, math, physics, Spanish, Spanish was listening, and US history, just to give you samples of the tests that the kids took last year. Our ACT, so we had about thirty percent of the class took it, which was about exactly the same as the year before. Our average was twenty-five point seven, which was a jump, and the highest composite score that we've ever had on record at Milis High. So, kids that took the ACT last year really did incredibly well. And every year, like, we are pushing the kids more and more to try to take both the SAT and ACT, because we've had kids that have just sent ACTs to school, we've had kids that have sent a combination of both. I'd say the majority do still send SAT scores to schools. But to take both now in the spring and see what you do better on, and then work to prepare yourself to figure out what exam you want to take the second time, and then send, I think, would be, is a big help. And I, and granted, sometimes amongst the group of kids here that take the ACT, are some of our more motivated students. And so, that may be a reason why maybe the scores are as good as they are. But I, but I think last year we saw record scores on all four subject areas with the same percentage of kids taking the test as we did the year before. So, I think that's really impressive and says a lot about those kids, and how well this test worked out for them. We were above the state average just slightly, because we were at twenty-five seven, the state was twenty-five point four. Above the national average. And Massachusetts students ranked second nationally on the ACT, we were like point one behind, I think, in Hampshire. But we always have, we're kind of the smallest percentage of students in the country taking ACTs as well. For AP courses, so last school year, we had fourteen different AP exams taken during the year. There were eighteen in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Fifty-seven percent of the class participated in an AP program by taking at least one AP class, one AP exam, and that was fifty-eight percent the year before, so that number stayed about exactly the same. And six of the nine exams that we had that were taken by classes actually taught here at the high school, because there are some of those classes that are done through AP that are taken through virtual high school or Tech Online Academy. So, we do, we actually had nine on campus last year, so you can see just from there, five of those were actually taken through online means. At least seventy percent in six of the nine scored a three or better, and three or better is considered that passing score, so that's really good. And in three of those nine exams, at least eighty percent scored a three or better. That was in Spanish language and the two different studio art exams that we have, so very impressive. The highest percentage of students in three or better was in studio art drawing under. The highest percentage of students in three or better was in, uh, studio art drawing, under three kids. That was a hundred percent, but that's, a hundred percent of three's good. Followed by Spanish language, which is impressive. Like, every year, those kids are amazing. It's not just immersion kids in there, it's a combination of immersion kids and kids that have come straight through our just regular Spanish program. Ninety-six percent of those kids, so that's twenty-seven students scored a three or, or better. That's awesome. And, uh, the two D design art class, ninety percent of those ten kids. So the, the art classes did great last year. But Spanish language did really, really well. Uh, we had a hundred and seventy-five exams, uh, taken by a hundred and two students. That was an increase and probably the most examined, most students that we've ever had, um, in a combination of both. And I'll tell you, coming back here again next year, that number will be higher again. More exams and a little bit more students next year as well. So those numbers continue to increase. And so when you consider how much access, uh, that we give the kids to try to get into these AP classes, and, you know, and last year, we had, I think, two sections of AP US history and two sections of AP biology, just to kind of, um, work with the numbers of what we had for a large senior class. But the access that those kids have to come up with these types of numbers is like really impressive. Tells you a lot about how well the kids are doing and how well the teachers are doing to, to get the curriculum to those kids. Seventy-five percent of the exams were, were scored a three or higher, um, with even more exams and more students last year. You know, seventy-one percent, so pretty close to the year before. Thirty-one percent a four or better, um, that was down a little bit from two thousand sixteen and then ten percent of the exam, but you kind of made that up a little bit. Still had a three or higher over there, and then ten percent of the exams scored a five, which was the highest possible score. And that was thirteen percent in two thousand sixteen, so I think that was fairly on par with the year before. You can see our participation rates and you can see really from two thousand thirteen on, you can kind of see a steady increase in both, um, the number of students and the number of exams administered. You know, that, that is, some of that is the, is the access the kids have through online. Some of that has been our ability to expand our AP curriculum a little bit. Last year, we offered AP human geography for the first time. This year, and, and we had a second AP studio art class, those kids are kind of able to differentiate their work between the two different, the two D studio art and drawing, um, working sometimes in the same classroom. And then this year, we have Marion Ziembels teaching AP US government and politics. So there, the, the number of APs that we're offering here this year, we have ten of them. It's, and I hope that we can sustain that, but it also depends on, you know, course demand, uh, the number of students that we have, how we have to utilize the teachers for, you know, getting through some of our regular curriculum and making sure we're serving all students, not just, you know, the fifteen, twenty kids that we take to the AP. So it's great that we can offer them. I think we probably, and I don't know if Bob's gonna say it right now, but with the number that we're at, we're probably at a max number right now based on the staff that we have. But it is nice that we've been able to, you know, put a couple extra into place and be able to maintain them as well, still keeping some electives, generally on regular, see people in our electives and other things as well. Mean grades, so, uh, six of the nine exams from classes that we still give these are the classes that are top here at high school, not really mean grades, but three or above. We were higher than state and national means in two of the nine exams. We're fairly close to most of the other ones, but not quite over the mean score. So even though we did have a lot of three or higher, our mean score wasn't quite on par with, um, uh, state and national means. In some of the exams, biology, English language and English Lit were above the national mean of that grouping. For AP scholars, so these are kids that scored, uh, three or higher, uh, multiple, uh, multiple tests, some four or higher, some of the fives. Twenty-five percent of our overall exam group went to AP scholar. That's the largest number of kids that we've ever had, AP scholar. And it's the largest number of kids I've ever had taking the test too, but, um, the largest number of scholars that we've ever had. Three of the kids in the senior class were scholars with distinction, six were scholars with honors, and twelve were AP scholar awards from the group last year. In, in comparison to the dart schools, again, this is the same grouping that we use for the SATs, that we actually have a fifth highest percentage of exams scoring three or above at seventy-five percent. So, you know, amongst a pretty competitive group of schools. Again, I think that's a pretty, that's pretty solid. Again, we consider the access that we give kids to take AP classes here at high school. And you can see the five, the four schools that were ahead of us were Georgetown, Dover Sherburne, Manchester, Essex, and King Philip. Spanish immersion, I was kind of trying to talk about this too. There were thirteen students, so you can see out of that group of AP Spanish kids, more than half of the class were actually immersion students. The overall GPA was a four point oh, which is higher than the overall regular student GPA at three point three. Ninety-two percent Spanish immersion students were four-year college versus seventy-seven percent of the global population. Ninety-two percent took the SAT for the, for that class. Which is similar to the, um, the overall class, but outscored six thirty to five eighty on the evidence-based reading and writing, and six thirty to five sixty on math. And then the, um, overall mean score, uh, for the class was twelve sixty, so it was a hundred and twenty points higher than our overall mean. And, uh, all thirteen of the immersion kids that took, uh, the Spanish language exam earned, uh, scores of three or above. You can see that there were eight fives, that's the highest total which you can guess, just to put that in. So those are the, that's just kind of the highlights of the test for you guys. We may have the actual report, so, um, you can read some of the other things that are in there. You can see that we're still moving on in large numbers. Two-year college for the last couple of years has been a popular choice. I think last year, maybe eleven kids had indicated they were gonna go to Mass Bay. That's become a little bit more of a popular option for kids, I think, with some of the different things that the state's done to try to, to, uh, help the transition from two-year to four-year college, to make it affordable for you. And for some kids that are just going in and doing two-year degrees and whatever they may be, if it's X-ray tech or, um, physical therapy assistant, there's a lot of different programs that the kids can jump through too, too. So, um, cost-wise, I think it's become effective for some kids to do, so, um, that numbers have been pretty stable the last couple of years. Our competitive acceptances, I think, remain pretty steady from the division with that, uh, but, uh, with that in there. I do like to kind of give you guys some of the survey data that we did with the class of two thousand seventeen. It was nice to see like eighty-five percent of the kids said they were admitted to one of their top three choice schools, uh, which I thought, you know, was great, cause eighty percent the year before, so it's nice to see that number even up a little bit, which means like, you know, hopefully they're being, you know, they're being realistic and how they're dealing with us and looking at lists and all that stuff, which is good. Financial aid package is still a factor, which is not a shock, that's sixty-two percent of our kids said that. The thing that made us feel good was to look and see the kids, cause they can be very critical of things, as you guys know. To say their overall satisfaction with their post-high school plan was about a four point three out of five, it was good. We want that to be five, um, you know, ultimately, that's our goal. But to see that it was at a four point three out of five was very satisfying for us. To see that three-quarters of the AP exams scored a three or higher and having that be the fifth highest percentage of all those dart schools, which I think is a challenging group, I thought was pretty impressive. We'll be able to do SAT comparisons in future years, so that'll start building as we get going along. But knowing that our ACT scores were really solid last year, um, we moved away from doing PSAT for tenth graders this year, and they funded, the ACT fund, they came out with a pre-ACT. We gave that to, we offered it to all the tenth graders this year and probably had about maybe sixty kids in the group that took it. So the hope is that they do pre-ACT as sophomores, pre-PSAT as juniors, and then have experience in both tests. And I hope the knowledge to maybe say like, wow, that test was a better fit for me, or that test was a better fit for me, and get a little more, um, prep for what they're gonna take in the junior year. The, uh, school counseling service, this was four point three out of five. That was the, uh, satisfaction with our services, which is kind of what we try to hang our hat on. So again, we'd love to see that be a five, but, um, four point three again made us feel good. And I guess we, we just would say, you know, as we do every year, just, uh, you know, every year, we kind of are, we try, we're trying to add things. And, you know, you can see like the career conference and, um, you know, having Melanie on board to help us with, uh, the job shadowing, placement and career, um, education, placement for the students that we're working with. You know, we're trying to add things more and more, but it also stretches us out, so, you know, all the support that, um, you know, we get from you guys and from our sta-, our staff is great here in allowing us to kind of come to classrooms and do stuff and helping us with everything along the way. So, um, you know, I can't see the blog, and we've got a great administration. We, we've worked together great, Melanie's been great to have on board, so, um, we thank her for having her secretary, who's a Tom Ward for us as well. Just thank you guys for having us tonight to, to present all this stuff to you, because it's a good chance for us to, uh, be able to show you what we're doing.
Great, thank you, guys. I'm sure there'll be some questions or comments.
I'll say, the, the comment I have, and it's partially you even sitting here year after year, but depending on where your kids are in life, and it, you kind of have different experiences and different things. One of the things, I think seeing this and just, you know, having an eighth grader, having gone through the, you know, the sixth grade transition to seventh kind of, and you know you have people looking, you know, what do people do for ninth grade, what do people do for, you know, seventh and eighth grade? I don't think we get this stuff out collectively. Don't get this out as much as we could, or, or maybe should. I think there's a phenomenal amount of stuff in here in terms of access, access to what kids have, what we get kids access to, just even the ten APs in this class, plus another four or five that, that were online. It's, you know, how, how success, the whole thing, what you guys do year over year in terms of prepping kids, you know, sitting here thinking, and I don't, I don't know how you would do it or, or what, but I think it would be something we may want to consider is, how do we get this information to sixth-grade parents when they're in sixth grade, knowing what the high school has to offer? So that when they're exploring, going elsewhere, whether it's seventh grade or ninth grade or whatever, that, you know, there's a, cause if you don't, if you don't have access to it, or you don't go looking for it, you don't, you don't know what the process is, you don't know, or all you know is, okay, you know, they just move on to high school. You just kind of, but I think, I think we should, as a district, almost compete for our own kids a little bit more than we do. So, and that just speaks to the work that you guys do and, and all the results we're getting, is we have a very good product here. And I think we fall flat in selling our own product to ourselves.
And I think we always talk about we do a better job than RBR. I think we're pumping stuff out there a little bit more. I think we need, we get so focused on the student, what you're doing, what you're building, and so wrapped up in all of that, that sometimes we lose the piece of like, you know, pitching to the outside a little bit more than, than we probably should. So we, we talked about that all the time and trying to find ways to get the message out there a little bit better. And so it's well said.
No, and it's, I mean, you guys are, like, it, but it's collective, you know, like, it's.
Right, yep.
The other thing I do try and do through that eighth to ninth grade transition rate, which is new, at least past the last three years, we kind of try, you know, but we, uh, yeah, so that's coming up in two weeks, yeah. Um, it's just, we invite all the eighth grade parents to come, just so we can kind of try and, um, tell them about what the high school's like. Yeah, the kids do, so we try and kind of, it'll be cool to be able to talk about the conference this year and Melanie's role and everything.
Tried to build that up for the last couple of years for that eighth and ninth grade. Been trying to get as many of the students and student organizations in as we possibly can. So we built the cafeteria before night, so that when parents come in and kids come in, and, and there are gonna be some parents and kids in the audience that are thinking about like, am I gonna go to Millis or am I gonna go to God or the Aggie? Or, you know, might I go to a private school or something? Like, our hope is that they come into that night here for our students and faculty and see what happens. You know, the opportunities that are available to them, and that might help sway it. But I, but I also think, you're right, Matt, it can't just be eighth grade. You're right, I think we need to build that up along the way. Like, that's one snapshot, but that's, you know, you get the process.
Sure, so, so once again, I, I always, I know it's an ongoing joke, but I do thoroughly enjoy this presentation, because I think what it shows, and, and I do like how we broke it out tonight, where it wasn't just the testing and where they were going, it's that you are looking at this as holistically, what are you gonna do after you graduate? Where, where do you go? Clearly ninety percent of our class are going on to some formal education, and the other ten percent, it looks like now, we're spending time and energy trying to figure out where do they land? And are they landing in a better place now than three or four years ago, or five years ago, right? Are we preparing them for more skilled labor or a plan to go out and work and transition, whatever it is? So this is always a good presentation, but something that you brought up earlier about the personal counseling, you have personal counseling, academic counseling, and then post-secondary planning. That's a lot. We have a very small office, you are clearly overworked and probably don't have enough resources. But the personal counseling has, with the mental health issues and other issues, and I suspect scratching the surface of opiates and other issues that are floating around, we're not isolated here, we're not any different than any other community. Do you have the resources that you need? Are there things that we as a district, not putting it on you, but we as a district should be looking at to increase the capacity to put safety nets up and to help people and, and put the care in place to protect those students that come forward? So that, I know that's a loaded question, and maybe it's not an easy answer, but that's something we as a district have to be concerned about, not you as a counseling office, but do we, do we have the capacity to, to, to help kids from the youngest all the way through the high school age, right? Cause they're all vulnerable, and they're all at risk, so is it, are you seeing things differently? Are you hearing things differently, people coming, approaching you more? I, I don't know, just curious about that, and whether we have, there's a lot going on, but do we have enough in place and do we need to do more? Which you can firmly put on your, your, your boss, who can then come back and talk. I didn't, I'm try, I'm not trying to set you up.
I mean, I think if you were to talk to us, like, you know, probably like you would to anybody, right? If you were to talk to somebody in the English department or the history department or math department, I would say, I would probably say, well, you know, I think, I totally agree with you, but, and you said, like you said, it's not just us, it's, you know, you go to guidance administrative meetings and you go to guidance meetings in the air, and everybody's dealing with some things, like, I think, mental health issues, are, are greater than I think we've ever dealt with before. And I think that's, that's your takeaway. There, there are times when I go and I'd say, oh, you know, things are feasible, okay, you know, I hear what's happening against some other buildings. And there are times when I go and I'm saying like, wow, we're, we're in the midst of it right now, it's not as bad in other places. You know, so you see both sides of it, and you can say the same thing. And, you know, and I think for all of us, I think we, you know, we work well as a staff between, you know, the two of us and our new adjustment counselor, Erin Sullivan. But she's one person for four hundred in the building, you know, and she's got kids that are on, in special education that she sees on a regular basis too, and tries to see generalative kids. And I think it's a lot, you know, because we'd love to be able, and I go, she would, we would like love to be able to run some groups. I do some things like that, sometimes our schedule doesn't come across to the end, you can do that. Nor does her, you know, what she's doing, um, in her role. Allow her to do that because she has so much individual time with students, you know, and I think, um, you know, it's a different way to say it. For instance, the class that Riley teaches from middle school is very valuable, and, and those kids take a lot out of it. But it also takes, which is there, it takes a chunk out of her day. Same thing with Erin, it takes a chunk out of her day, but it's valuable at the same time too, you know? So, yeah, I think we are trying to figure out how to balance all that stuff out, and it's, it is probably increasingly more challenging than ever. Not just that we're dealing with the mental health piece, but that we're trying to add things on to what we're doing too. And it's been, oh, things are changing and moving, and we're trying to provide more of these for the kids. But, you know, but there's just the two of us, you know, and that's, and that's not.
And part of the conversation that we've had over the years has been, it's not just on the schools. It's a town issue. And how do we leverage resources and how do we share, so it's not just on the high school counseling office? But, and, and how do we, how do we work together and how do we look for funding opportunities? And opportunities to kind of leverage resources and identify places where we can at least put some stopgap measures in place? Cause this is not, this is not, any of this is directed on you, but you brought it up and you, you'll probably have the kids who are at the most vulnerable age, cause they're, they're, they're young adults at that point and they're, have a little more freedom, so. And I also think part of the, the mental health issue- And I also think part of the mental health issue is, I think people are more willing to talk about it, right? When I was young, that was never really talked about, it was kind of, it was there, it was just never discussed. I think it's now more out there in the lexicon.
And being in that social media. So, yeah, it's, it's hard to say, because, of course, we would, yeah, there are kids in this school who on certain days need somewhere to be all day long, because they can't go to class. But, I mean, we don't want to send, we wouldn't send them home, we want to support them here. So, and, and there are a good number of those kids, so it's, we always could use more resources, but I am so glad we have a full-time adjustment counselor, and Sullivan's awesome. But, yeah, that's what sticks out to me, is some of those kids who, in transition, like there are kids who are hospitalized, because they're not safe to themselves, and coming back from hospitalization, and how we help them transition back in, is a huge process. So, that's something that I think we're always looking to improve. But, yeah, there's some of those things, that like, there's always, there always needs more help.
Yeah, I'm sure you're pulling them, if I say the same thing.
Yeah.
We help, I mean, it's like any department will probably say it, but I think we do feel a lot, because, you know, it is in our office, it's just the two of us, and it's, you know, and it, that's why, you know, there's about a real value to us being able to go to some different areas, like guidance schools in the area, and be able to share and kind of case counsel each other, and then help each other, because I think it's helped us to navigate some of the things that we do here, and you see what other schools are able to do, and I think there are some of those pieces that we can probably put in place here, but, but resources.
And it's a question that we ask of all administrators and a lot of people that present.
Yeah.
I mean, you're asking for an adjustment council, Chuck Rann asks for a football stadium, so I mean, and the price, the price tags are. And last thing, an eighty-six percent approval rating is seventy-nine points higher than Congress. Congress is at seven percent, you're at eighty-six percent. You're doing, I did. You're doing very well.
Yeah, I don't know if that's company you're really wanting me to.
I was trying to make a point. Eighty-six percent is impressive.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you. I don't have any questions or anything else. Thank you, like, thank you for all that you guys do. As Steve said, this is one of the, one of the presentations that I think all of us enjoy to get that insight into how the class has done in the past year. So, we look forward to it every year, and thank you guys for everything that you do.
Thank you. Good job.
So, moving right ahead, well, I'll speed along. Spring sports have started, even though there's snow all over the ground. Speaking of snow, I've included in your packets the calendar. We have had four cancellation days, days canceled due to weather, two just general snow days, and two days without power, which brings us to June nineteenth, as our current last day of school. We have one more day that we can use, but it looks like tomorrow's storm is going to hold off long enough that we'll get a full day of school in. We'll be monitoring that at five AM, four-thirty to five AM tomorrow morning, to see if we need to adjust that at all. And I included the policy for your information, because we must make up all the days up until March thirty-first. After April first, if we've reached our one-hundred-eighty-fifth day that is scheduled, then we are not required to schedule additional snow days, or school days. So, if we have an April snowstorm, or weather, or power outage, then we will not need to add to that. But we, right now, need to get through the rest of March without, well, we do have one more we can use, one more snow day. Enrollment, we did have a family move out of town, so there is a slight drop in enrollment of three, three students, and one fewer preschool student, and one increase to out-of-district placement. So that is the enrollment report, and I'd like to ask Mary.
Madam Chair, before we, before we move on.
Yep.
I know we, and a couple meetings ago, we were talking about calendars going forward, especially with the opening of the Clyde Brown in the nineteen.
Twenty, or nineteen.
The twenty-nineteenth school year. And we were going to be starting the Tuesday after Labor Day. We may want to, we may want to, we had talked about possibly eliminating one of the vacation weeks, and now where things are going, this, we're, we're up against June, potentially June twenty, twentieth right now, starting before Labor Day. We, we're really going to have to take into consideration adjusting the calendar where, because if we have two full weeks of vacation, and I think one of them even had a long Christmas break that year.
Yeah, that is the year.
We, we honestly could be looking at going into late, late June. We know these buildings are not the.
And we will.
The most ventilated and cool and conducive to learning when it's eighty degrees out. So, I, I don't want to derail the conversation now, but based on what's just happened in March, when we thought we were through most of it, we're going to have to really rethink how we approach that in the nineteen, twenty school year.
And we will be getting that survey out to parents about that for the nineteen, twenty school year.
Is one of the questions, or one of the suggestions about we may not have?
We had talked about that, yeah.
One of those weeks, which one would be better? Is that the question we're asking?
Yes, we haven't fully developed all the questions yet, so that's certainly, we can add that.
Like, we're gonna, we're almost, probably most likely going to get rid of one of the weeks, which one of the weeks we have.
What might actually be a good idea, and I mean, whether the survey is actually take this year, and transpose it as if we started the week after, to show, here's where we would be if we did it and had the five, you know, how, these days, with the way the Christmas falls and et cetera, here's the day we're looking at.
Right.
So.
I bet you we're closer to twenty-seven.
Right, so, because if you just ask people, would you, do you want to give, give up one week of the two? People are going to say, no, but if.
If you don't give up, we're.
But then, if you, if you actually put in front of them, okay, then understand that you are going to school until the Fourth of July, like, the weekend before the Fourth of July. So, it might just give people a little bit of perspective to say, okay, maybe I really need to think about this. Otherwise, we get a survey back of people just clicking and not really having any frame of reference of what we're talking about.
And maybe, I don't know if I want to talk through this, because I know we talked about, do we take, do we take one of the weeks away altogether? Or, I know, I was talking to somebody in Connecticut, and they actually do a long weekend at the, at the beginning of, like, so, if for February, instead of that full week off, they do a four-day weekend in February, so they get.
Columbus Day.
Right, they do Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday for February, and the kids go to school the rest of that week. And then they get a one-week vacation, that they, a full week vacation.
In April.
So, yeah. So we might just want to come up with different options, like, option one is, and get you out on this date, option two, get you out on this date, and see what people prefer, so that they would understand.
But Mark's point is right.
Absolutely, starting with Mark's point, and then giving them options that get an earlier release.
We're going to base this, our calendar on, we're going to use all five snow days that we've, that we put in the calendar every year.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's where we would be, because if I go on this thinking, we were starting like six or seven days later than normal, almost.
Labor Day was very early that year, so it's.
We started a week after that.
Yeah, it's a week later.
I feel like the ninth or something like that, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Nope, Mary Jane. We have Mary Jane Driscoll for our transportation update, and she has good news.
Hello.
So, you have some good news, you guys have handouts, I didn't do a PowerPoint, maybe next year.
Let's see, okay.
We can start with, you know, we are at the point where we are in our fifth year of the buses, so we do have that lease, these, these up, and we put that out to, or we're putting it out shortly to get some prospective bids on some new buses. We did take the opportunity to give ourselves an option of a five-lease for six buses, or a five-lease for four, although I shouldn't say that, six or five, a five-lease for five buses, or a five-lease for six buses. In case the five-lease for the six buses comes in a little high, then we have the option to, maybe reduce it by a bus if we have to, and use one of our older buses on a run, something like that. We have some different options that we can look at. I am happy to report that we, it does look like our costs have gone down this year. If you look at the cost history handout that I, I did for you, a little chart that kind of shows what we did my first year in sixteen, and then in seventeen, and then in eighteen, and if you notice that the total cost, even with the purchase of the van, we've done some savings this year. I've even broken it down by cost per rider and cost per mile, and I've showed you the miles per gallon that we're getting, on average, you know, the whole fleet together. You have any questions about any of that?
No.
Yeah, no, thank you. I don't have any. Mr. Conway? Mr. Catalina? Okay.
Kind of, you know, really positive kind of thing that we're, that we're doing, so. I've also included, I've updated the vehicle list to the vehicle inventory, so that you have a, a chance to look at, you know, the new vehicles that we've brought on, and where we stand with replacing some of the older ones, what would have been taken out of service, which ones we've been able to dispose of, which ones we've gotten rid of, which ones we've moved to the spare, as a spare vehicle versus the, you know, daily vehicles. I know that's a lot of information, and it varies in how much time to look at it.
I think one of the nice things that Mary Jane has been able to do is really take a good, hard look at our routes for special education vans, consolidate where we can, without making it too long of a journey for any of the students. And there have been considerable cost savings by doing that.
We've done a lot of work at trying to control the costs, even with the fact that when we do have to send our vehicles out for repairs, I negotiate with the vendors for our labor cost, because that's something that they can adjust. You know, I explained in the war school, we have fixed amount of dollars, we're nonprofit, we're trying to, you know, get by on what we have, so. And most of the time, they're very willing to work with us. So I have been able to negotiate some lower costs for us in that area. I also have included a kind of a repair sheet, where I showed you some of the, the kind of major things, the bigger things that we've done with some of our vehicles. I didn't show every little thing, and, you know, I didn't show every vehicle, I showed some of the, especially with the larger buses, as you can see, we've hit the fifth year, and in the fifth year, you're starting to, you know, repair exhaust, and, and serpentine belts, and other little things that are really, you know, you don't really have to touch in the first few years. So, I had, I had talked to the superintendent, and I was telling her that my projection for next year would be that I would, I would like to see some of our maintenance costs come down, because we'll have a new fleet, you know, so we'll see some of that happen for us. I do want to point out that our ridership is up, so even though our ridership is up this year, if you notice our miles are down, like, that's really like working on, you know, routing, and all, all those kind of things that we can do, even though our ridership is up, our cost is coming down. So that's, that's all kind of, you know, just paying attention to every, every little penny over there. But it, it goes to the, to the heart of the matter, that if you own your own buses, you really have a lot better chance at controlling the cost. You know, you might always see this, you're not going to always see this happening. Some years, you know, things are going to happen, you get special needs students that have to go out of placement, and you get, I could get three of them by the end of the year, three more of them, which would mean, you know, if I can consolidate, yes, but sometimes you can't. Then you have to throw on three more vans, and it's three more drivers involved. But when you can control it, you control it. In that way there, when you, when you can't, it's not as bad of a, I can't count. You have any questions about any of that?
So, the question is, what happened, in your opinion, from seventeen to eighteen? We had, in the amount of money, the revenue coming in from the revolving, it's, we had three hundred and ten thousand in FY seventeen, and we're down to a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Okay.
Well, as.
No, I, I know.
Yeah, the revenue coming in does change yearly, based on what out-of-district placements we have for other towns, and also based on field trips, and other different kind of things that happen, that, you know, sometimes you do have a lot of other towns coming to you, looking for assistance, but when that happens, you also increase your cost. Like, that's one of the reasons our costs have gone down too, is because of, we are doing less of that, but it's, it's given us the ability to also save on the other side, because you're not paying a driver, you're not incurring their benefits that come along with that, you're not paying for a vehicle, the mileage, the wear and tear, the repairs, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, you do it when it makes sense for us, if we're going in that direction, or if we're going by there anyway, that's, but you don't want to go out of your way to do it, because then the cost doesn't, you don't offset the cost that way. So, you know, and some of that, you know, one of the things, one of the out-of-district placements that we were doing for Except, it was Except, Except was a big one that we had. But something happened at Except after I came here. They changed hands three times, their management. And when they started looking at your costs, they said, yeah, they said, we're going to, you know, do this ourselves. And, and that makes sense for them, so you can't, you know, be upset by that. Everybody's going to do it.
Sure.
They're all trying to control their costs, and they're still in competition, you know.
And then additionally, we, any, any driver adds about twenty thousand in benefits to the town side of paying for benefits, so when we've been able to consolidate routes, then it's not only a savings on our side, it's, it's a savings for the town in terms of benefits.
So the other piece is, we made a lot of progress in thirteen and fourteen in replacement of the vans. We didn't do any vans in fifteen. We did two in sixteen. We did one in seventeen. But, so we really, we can't go back, we can't go backwards. As a committee, we can't go backwards. We have to, we, we, we have to try to get on, we, we clearly said that we wanted to try to do two a year. That's not always possible, but we had one year where we did nothing. We had one year where we did one, so in the last three years, we're, we're off, we're off. So we, as we approach the end of the year, we, we need to think, we may need to make a tough decision on some of this carryover money, just so, because we're going to get ourselves in a bad position again, where we let the fleet go down, and then we're spending more money on cost, and we have vehicles that are off the road, because you're doing a good job with the cost per miles, but if the van, if the, if the, the vans, I know some of them are cars, but the minivans and the vans and the cars, if they start to go down, our, our maintenance costs are going to go up, our, our downtime is going to go up, and we're going to be, we're going to be in a position where we're not going to be able to cover routes, because we don't have a vehicle. And we're going to be, we're going to be in a position where we're not going to be able to cover routes because we don't have a vehicle.
Right now, we presently have five spares, five spares that are two thousand eleven or newer because we have been bringing in new vehicles. And as, as, as runs get eliminated or runs change, I merge them as much as possible, which puts less vehicles on the road. But we have five that are, I consider very, very good condition vans. And then we have two what I consider emergency backups because those are the old ones that you see that I've hung on to in case something like that were to occur, like all of a sudden I get an influx, I can throw three vans on the road and still have a backup of a couple vans. So, so those two that you see that are older, they still do pass the seventy inspection, okay? So we do keep them up. But as we bring in new ones, now we just got a new one this year. We did pick up one. I think the money was appropriated last year, but we didn't really actually get it.
So this needs to be updated then. So there is something in eighteen?
It, it was purchased in eighteen, but the money was appropriated in seventeen.
Is it on here?
It is, it's the van twenty.
Okay.
Van twenty is, is-
Okay, so that's-
Yeah, it came in in the beginning of the spring.
Also, also on this sheet, this does not include the vans purchased through town warrants.
No, no, I know that.
Okay.
I, I'm talking, I'm looking at the vehicle on the tour sheet-
This one, yeah, right, yeah.
And saying, we're doing, you're doing fine. This is not a reflection on you. There's, there's a history to this that predates you a long time and that the, the fleet was a mess. And we, it took us a while.
When I came on board, I remember that you had quite a few that were actually in such, the body was in such shape that they couldn't pass the inspection. And we weeded through those and kind of tried to get rid of them. As you can see, I still, I still left them on the sheet as the date that we, we sold them or took them out of commission so that we still have that history there so that I remind myself.
Right. Well, I mean, if you look at van ten and van twelve, they're each over a hundred thousand miles. So you're doing a good job, but there's eventually going to be a point where they're done. They're, they're old Fords, they're eight-year-old Fords right now. So a caravan, you may be able to stretch out a little bit, right? They're, they have less miles, but, so while I appreciate, and we had a, an old transportation operations guy that would get by and didn't want to buy anything new and, and you eventually will pay the price with that. So I'm not looking to, to spend money that we don't have or just to spend, just to spend. But we do have to, we, we as a committee stated, we tried to do two a year and we can't always do that. But, so I'm, my, my comments are less directed at you, more directed to the committee that we have to, when we approach, when we start getting towards the end of the year and we have a better idea of how things are going to end up, we do have to think about possibly at least doing one just to, just to get, just to keep us in, in the game. I, I don't want to, I don't want to go back to where we were. You're doing a good job. This is not a, this is a, this is not a logistical question, this is a budgetary decision in question. So this is not anything to do with what you're doing with the, with the vans or how you manage the drivers.
But I want to remind you about last year. Last year, we bought with the more expensive van, remember?
That's right.
It was like the wheel-
The chair van, right?
And the bigger, it was the bigger field chair van.
Yep.
It was a Pro Master. And so that's kind of why we didn't end up with two because that would cost us almost sixty thousand.
Nope, I know.
Just to remind you. Not like, because you guys, I think you guys are doing a great job at keeping your fleet up. I think it's wonderful that, that you care about that and that you want to replace them.
You should understand that I'm trying to buy you vans. You should, you should not misinterpret what I am doing, that I am trying to buy you vans, so. No, but you're right, we did buy, we had to buy the more expensive one. It was effectively the price of two regular vans, so.
We needed a better wheel.
Exactly.
And I think the fact that you've been able to reduce and consolidate routes helps with that too. That when, you know, when we, as we were talking, that currently the fleet you feel is, is fine, but come fall, when we will want to reevaluate again or perhaps in time for Fall Town Meeting?
Yes. Right now, to the amount of students we're moving and for what we're doing, our volume, we're in good shape. And because of the fact that our, our oldest vans are like two thousand elevens, I mean, the ones that we're using on, you know, that's, that's pretty good considering when I got here, we had like the ninety-nine and two's and the ninety-sixes and, you know, things like that, that were really, you know, the body, the bodies were, had holes. And we were, we were paying to repair that stuff just to keep it on the road. Now, when we go through an inspection, we go through an inspection. It's not like we have to get good bodywork and we have to go get oil leaks fixed and we have to go, not with the vans. You know, the bigger buses, we, this year was a tough year for the bigger buses because they're getting older. And we ended up replacing all the exhausts, like I said. But just the vans there, they kind of sailed through the inspections now, which is really kind of nice, so. We're doing better.
We talk about it later in May and June.
Well, I, I think we may actually want to not talk about it now, but I think it should be, I think this revolving, the program should be, we should probably evaluate it over the next month or two as we go through the budget process because on this schedule where, where the FY nineteen is projected, we're projecting a fifty thou, seven thousand dollar deficit next year. So I think we need to understand where that deficit's coming from. I think it's a function of, we're not projecting any, really any new revenue, but all of our, but, but our salaries are going up. So we just, I think we need to have, we need to have an understanding of what, what's happening there so that, because otherwise, we're looking at going into the year with a hundred and thirty-three and losing sixty of it next year. And then presumably being in the same position the following year and being out of it. So I think we just need to, we need to get a handle on that. I think unfortunately, one of the reasons we've been able to buy vans out of this is because we've had those extra routes.
Outside.
And we've had that revenue. And with that falling off, that-
Yeah, we had two year, we had two years of revolving bringing in in three oh five and three ten.
Right.
Now we're down to one twenty-six. We've, we've lost a hundred and eighty.
Right. So, so, yeah, so I think, as, but I think that that's, this is as much of FY nineteen budget discussion as it is waiting for the end of the year to see.
No, no, I, I understand that.
Any other questions?
No, thank you for-
Thank you.
Thank you for doing a very complicated job.
And then finally, in your packets is the breakout by sports that you had asked Mr. Grant and April Yu to work on. So he has provided you his best he can, the estimate of the breakout of cost per sport for this year.
Certainly we had anything actionable for this evening with this. This was as a follow-up, like you mentioned Nancy, to Chuck's presentation at our last meeting. And then at some future date, if we have conversations about athletic fees, we wanted to have, have Chuck provide us with this information so that we would have this as a reference point.
Yeah, so just looking at this real quick and I think one, just one question I have is it looks like all of the information up at the top, getting down to a cost per athlete or, and on net gain-loss per athlete. Oh, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, so we've got this sub varsity stipends off to the right, which looks like is then being reduced from what's in the game.
Yeah.
So I'm just, so I guess my one question would be, can we break that out, break that twenty-six out by the various sports and add it?
Sure.
Because that's really, it really is a higher cost per athlete because all levels are playing, are paying a fee. And then, then the other question, I guess, just off of that would be, do we have the varsity stipends in here? Or are they covered, are they not in here because they're covered out of the operating budget? And this is only what goes out of the revolving account?
But that's not how we should be looking at it. We should be look, I, I understand looking at the funding sources important, but we should really looking at the cost per sport.
No, that's why I'm trying to say that the varsity stipend should be in here as well. I'm guessing that it's not because it's funded out of the operating budget.
Let me verify that, both those things. And we can add a column for the coaching stipend. Two columns, coaching stipend that hits, operating budget, coaching stipend that hits revolving.
Because, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on athletics? Okay. I know next on the agenda, we have assistant finance, but if we can flip that because Mr. Banks has so kindly been, been very patient and waiting. So we'll invite Mike Banks up to talk about some temporary sports contingencies while we are in the midst of construction at the Clyde Brown School. Tonight, you were here for, you were here for one of the highlights. This is certainly one of the highlight nights with all that great information the guidance, the guidance team shares with us, so.
So just an introduction of Mike Banks. I'm on the recreation committee and I like to place on the, the ideas of, I'm great about protecting sports and, you know, trying to contribute in other ways as well, of course. I'm coming in today to talk about some issues that I and other people have identified that we would like to work to kind of resolve both during the construction phase of the new school and it's long-term after the new school is built. So I'm not sure if you're able to read, but I'm just going to read three areas that we were going to address. First one, with the basketball court coming down next to the tennis court, looking at the possibility of putting up hoops, even, you know, the edge of parking lots, looking at safe places to put the open course. And then some of them, or if not all of them, being on school property, certainly looking to keep you all informed and aware of, you know, these discussions that are ongoing. I did speak with superintendent today, I had a really good meeting with John Ankler about his ideas as well. He does have some equipment that he's identified that was safe and sustainable, especially for a temporary basis. They may not be regulation basketball backboards at this point, but they'd certainly be welcome in the community. I've also, on, on the recreation committee, Stephen Cassidy is, is one of our members. He might know, he runs a lot of baseball and basketball programs in town. So great resource in the community. He works with your freshman basketball coach regularly and they run drills together. And as you know, the rectory court is our last court standing in town. So right now, we're, we're looking at potential spots that we can put up courts. Sorry, not courts, we'll probably only be able to go with like a half court of setups. So I don't think that's controversial in any way. We're certainly going to keep you all informed. I think that setting up hoops around, in particular around the school building policies, you know, might want to be adopted about, you know, making sure that those are used during, not during school hours, for instance, unless the school wants to use them, of course. And setting up proper safety barriers that might be mobile. We're looking at the possibility of setting up courts that might be used. Because we actually could set up a, a full court, if you would, if you will, during the summer too. And taking one of those hoops, like if it were in the middle of a parking lot, taking it out once the school year's done, so. I'll continue to work with, with John, Nancy and people on the ESBC. Definitely not going to be needing money from the school committee, so that's probably ridiculous to get here. Is there any questions on that part of, and you can certainly come back and ask anything at any time. But I'll move on to the second topic, which, when I, when I, and I apologize for, I apologize profusely to everyone about getting involved in the process a little late. But in looking at the, the grand new plan for the school and looking at how the school was, where the new location is and how it pushes it, we lose a tremendous buffer that we used to have between the little kids' play, playground area and the basketball court, which is primarily used by teenagers. I know during the school year, during the school day, you're not really getting a lot of use on the basketball court, so it's just not an issue. But if you go to, if your kid plays baseball, a lot of the younger siblings or older siblings go out and play on that playground. A lot of families in the area walk over and use that in the outside school. So looking at possible options to relocate the basketball court. Of course, there's very limited space that is town-owned. I did talk with John today, we did a site walk around, we met with Doug, one of the Compass Project managers. Looking at some of the, the diagrams of the whole school property plot and have come up with like a couple of potential spaces. One of them, just to give you an idea of, you know, we definitely want to keep it away from the school facilities would be behind where the after-school program building is, the parking that goes behind that.
The current, the current, the current extended day? Okay.
So you, you go down, follow the driveway around that. There is still going to be that access road that goes around, but there's kind of that, in the new plan, that's a grassy area. It's kind of a step off of the road.
And I think, so if I remember correctly, in the new plan, I think they, we had said that we were going to keep that as parking? So is it like the existing parking lot that's outside the extended day program today?
Yeah, so right, if you follow that pathway along that road, the access road that goes around, think about where the dumpsters are at Clyde Brown right now.
Oh, yeah.
It's actually like that way in parking, not the parking as you drive.
Oh, okay, okay. So kind of behind, oh, so you said behind, so, okay, I was thinking next to, yep, okay.
And so-
Oh, yeah.
I talked to ESBC, they're supportive of exploring this idea. I've talked to some school officials have, you know, they're certainly receptive to, to, to keep moving forward. When I talked to town representatives, the one concern that was raised to me was that they felt that during the presentation of the, of the new project, that there were assurances made that the courts would be available to the public, like, you know, all day. So we, and looking at that particular spot, being that it is on school property, we, you know, would defer to the school committee to, to say that they would be willing to allow, say, an adult to be using the court during school hours.
If I remember correctly, either scenario has the court on school property.
So not if we stay, keep it where it is. The division of, based on the land swap, I believe the, the line goes between the playground and the basketball court.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only issue, right? Now, if we are able to move that court and not build the one that's existing in the existing plans, we might also be able to move the tennis court in a little bit closer and free and solve another- and solve another problem in that area, which is allowing for pole end parking. There's another concern of mine really for the, the parents during the basketball games, you have three diamonds out there, they're all using at the same time, we're taking a lot of parking. I was in that parking lot that was next to the tennis courts. I do think that, like, the tennis court, the people using the tennis courts would be realistically able to park at the high school and after school. It's not a problem, but I, I struggle to see people, you know, driving over here for baseball games. If we do keep this basketball court in the, as planned, it still could, there still would be interest in seeing if we could put up a hoop in that section or perhaps along another, another hardtop area on school property. We do have some donated funds that have been made available, so it shouldn't add any cost really to it. Certainly, we wouldn't be coming to the school committee for any funds. To ESBC, there might be some, some costs, but I suppose that would be for, for them to make a consideration of.
So, so the question is.
So do we, uh.
With the school committee, I don't know how it's necessarily a policy, would we support a basketball court on the opposite, under the new construction on the, in the parking lot area that is now the existing Clyde Brown, that will be torn down and become parking, correct? So right above the flag football and the fields now. So that's, that, in that area, so exactly where it is, but that's where it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's on school property, so the question is, and I don't recall any specific conversation saying that the basketball courts would be closed. I mean Denise and I made most of them and that, I don't know where that information's coming from, but it, it's fine if, it's fine if that's out there, but that was never. Of all of the things that were concerning, that was not a concern about who would be using them and when. That being said, from just a, a use of the basketball courts, now we have a lot of our kids that use the basketball courts. And just to throw another wrinkle in, and I'm not trying to say that's not a good area, but that's farther away from the school.
Right.
With adult eyes, right? So when school empties out, because I come through here to pick up my son every now and then, there's a lot of kids that already, that go right out to the court. So school's over, they're not at school anymore, but they're effectively at school still, right? There's still teachers, there's still administrators, there's still people around. And I'm not saying that bad things are going to happen when they get, the court gets moved, but it's isolated, right? And there's, there's a parking lot, I'm less worried about that because there's cars everywhere around here right now. So that's just one other dynamic, and maybe the only place that it lasts in Lanswell. But there is, we are losing a little bit of guardianship of the kids. Not a deal breaker, but that's just something to throw away.
I guess my thing is that, if that's actually farther away from the school, I don't see, one, until there's actually a proposal and there's a spot, I'm not comfortable really saying we support one thing or the other, because I'd like to actually see what.
Yeah, like, I feel like this should be coming, I, I know you sit on the committee, but it feels like this should be coming from kind of a formal sketch from the ESBC. I'm not, this is good, this is a good first conversation, but saying that this fits in, for the lack of a better term, a master plan of the campus.
What I would say is I have no objection of hearing a proposal from ESBC, you, whoever, once all those pieces are actually put together. Like, if, if the request of us is, would we be open to hearing something different on, if the basketball court landed somewhere else and we then needed to get some type of formal approval? I would be happy to listen to that, but I don't think without knowing exactly what the pieces are, I don't think it'd be good to vote. But absent from that, in terms of what I'm hearing is that what, what potentially the concern is, is if the court lands too close to a school building, would the school committee want some ability to close the court during school hours? I don't know, we've never had that discussion.
It's never been our court.
Well, true, but if it's, but I would argue if it's farther away from the actual building, I would be less inclined to be concerned about somebody walking over there at.
Yes.
Ten o'clock in the morning than where it is right now. I mean, where it's planted right now is like right next to, right next to the building.
And, and where it is right now, you potentially might not be able to ask someone to leave that court. But, you know, unless they're presenting some type of, of a real concern, I suppose we might not always ask them when we want.
Well, if it is on school property, we still control it.
Right, but that one isn't on school property, the one, the one over here, I mean.
Oh, the one that's gone.
And the one that's being replaced.
Is not on school property?
Right.
Right.
Nor is the tennis court.
So you're right, so until he presents or she presents some sort of disruption or disturbance.
So, and I should have been maybe more clear, but the, the ESBC did ask me, when I started up to them, I don't know if it was me, it was, they asked me to come in. I told them I wanted to make the school committee aware of kind of where, where the discussion has been going. And certainly don't want any surprises for you, I want this to be your surprise. This is about as much as you're going to get. And then when a proposal is adopted, certainly we want buy-in from all of the stakeholders that they're receptive to, to moving forward. So I can report back to them, I can talk more with Jeff from Compass, from Maine, who's chairing the ESBC about this latest identified spot. And we can come back to you with like more solid information about it.
I mean, does it work for the ESBC? I mean, does it work for, I mean, this, these plans were laid out, I mean, does this, this is, obviously things change during construction, but is this something that works?
Right, this is, and this is, in my opinion even, a, a significant change in relocating.
You said, is it?
Is, I believe it is.
Okay.
I believe that especially when you think of the, the plan that was put together and presented to the voters, you know, making a change to that. You know, it's, I wouldn't take that lightly.
Yeah, but we're not changing the school.
True.
We're changing a recreational byproduct that is part of the bigger picture.
The school building committee, in my opinion, they were receptive to this change because they feel like it, it has many positive benefits. And I don't believe it really has any negative drawbacks, with the exception of, and this, that wasn't the school building committee, that was the DPW had like saying, suggesting that we just make sure that people will be able to, like, if a senior citizen, not senior too, wanted to use the hoop, there was, there was like an opportunity. And, and my, my discussion with the, one of the local residents right up the street here was that she recalled like maybe two people ever playing basketball during.
That's what I was going to say, huh? If we put a video camera out on this court out here, now it's not there, but how many people have ever been there during the middle of that, during school?
Now, I did, I did, I am sensitive too, if the school, if the athletics department utilizes, I know they've utilized the tennis courts. Have they, do they utilize that basketball court for their curriculum?
No, no, we use it.
Because you have indoor gymnasium, basketball during the winter.
Right, we don't use it, we use it for sometimes, especially during MCAS in the spring when kids need breaks. It's part of going out and having recreational recess time for middle schoolers, but no, it's not used for athletics.
And, and lastly, I have a kind of, really, I'm going to do it here, but if we are able, and they do decide to, to simply reposition the proposed court to that site and not replace the one, continue with the one here, there's still an opportunity to put a hardtop surface there that may be in a smaller form. Perhaps with the six, I believe there were six foot hoops that used to be available to the kids at recess. Eight foot might be more appropriate because now this is going to be only the older kid recess pad, whereas I think the younger kids go up to the others. So we could have a half court set up perhaps there and still be able to move the, the tennis courts in the mid, create some more parking space.
And the, the lower court, the lower rims would work for the seniors that are going to run a league Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Please don't be sarcastic.
And, and on your point, your concern for, for senior citizens and athletics, we are also looking at putting in adjustable height nets.
You are good.
On the pet sports, which would allow for pickleball. So I'm not sure if.
A very popular sport with the seniors.
Excellent. So just that, where is the, where is the temporary court in the park lot, where are you going to put it?
Well, so that's what I spoke with John today about that. He had some ideas about using, at least in the summertime, the rotary fast turnarounds, putting hoops there facing outward. Having some wet sawhorses out to block traffic from coming through. Other areas that we looked at were the parking lot over here, along the perimeter. So it would be, it would be half court play, but, you know, we are sensitive to, you know, as soon as, when the school year starts.
Sure.
What, what becomes of this, are they in the way of parking? He wants to set them up so that they aren't, but that they can stay there and you just hope that people don't park there in the evenings. Unless, of course, there's like a large drop or, that's understandable. I don't think there would be adequate lighting, so I don't think evening play would be a mission. For the summer, it would be great to get the kids, the rectory court is loaded. Steve and, is it Paul Geary?
Yep.
He runs a lot of clinics for girls basketball.
Every day.
They're telling me they can't get on the rectory court, just the demand is so high. So putting up more and more nets in general.
And this was, this was one of our concerns when we were building the school in the present location. This was, there were, there were a lot of pros and there were some cons, and this was definitely one of the cons in that, in the grand scheme of things, it was going to hurt a little bit, but there was a, a bigger picture thing. But I appreciate, I, I appreciate what you're doing to try to mitigate the, the, the impact for during the construction time.
And I think in terms of find, I mean, finding the space, really it is a, it's a, it's a spring, summer, early fall issue. Because say, so once you get, in terms of then getting into when school is in session, because then you start getting into late fall.
Metro West and JV and varsity.
Everybody's already inside, it starts getting colder, I mean, you know, you'll, I mean, you drive by the rectory court, you know, sometimes on the weekends and warmer days, kid will go shovel and there'll be a couple of kids up there, but if, if there was a way to find, you know, space that, that really could be utilized for the summer, I'd be, I'd be less concerned about how long into the school year it could last, because once school starts, I, I really wouldn't be that concerned about it. So if it, if we got something set up, but then it had to come down once school started, that's, that'd be a big win.
It would, it would, it would get through a huge part.
No, it's been good.
Good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
So we'll, I'll report back to the ESBC and get back to you guys. You gotta say, three for three, I don't know if you remember, I was here quite a while ago, getting my dog in the green garden, you guys came through for me.
For a weekend.
I wrote a letter about parking at Clyde Brown and moving to school to accommodate that request.
You got a good track, okay. What else do you want to put on your agenda next?
Get the mic and drop it and walk off. I wish you would have pulled papers.
Yes, thank you very much, Mike, have a good night. Excellent, all right, so next on the agenda, we have, we have job description and process that's been drafted for current position, which we call business manager. But we've had some discussion about changing that to assistant finance director. So Nancy has drafted a, a draft process and has also put together a job description for that role. We've had some discussions with the town related to how they will be hiring for the finance director role. We will be moving forward with hiring what we're calling an assistant finance director role for the schools. So we would like to get moving on that process as the time is now for us to finalize job description and post, so that we can start seeking candidates and kick that process off, so.
Denise, before we start.
Yes.
Why are we not, why are we not calling this position a business, a business manager? And what is the difference between what would be a business manager and an assistant finance director?
So part of the opportunity that we have as far as timing is concerned, the schools in the town find themselves in the, in a unique situation where both are looking to hire new finance roles. So with that, we've spoken to the town about being able to leverage more than we do today of the town's finance director role as it rolls out. There's a, a district, it's Barnstable, I believe, that serves in the same model. And they run it with these different titles. So in essence, the difference is, and Nancy, you can speak to the specifics of the difference. We are protect, making sure that the school district gets everything that we need out of our finance position. So, I will tread lightly. Making sure that as we hire, I think we have expanded, so I'll, I'll go to you Nancy on the differences. So why don't we start there and then I'll come back and round it out.
Well, it's somewhat of a long-term goal that we have a lot more collaboration between the schools and the town in terms of schools moving over to Munis, having a, a role at the town level that is supportive and to eliminate some of the inefficiencies and redundancies in our current setup, where we run micro budget and they're on Munis, et cetera. So the long-term goal is to have greater collaboration, communication, and more efficiency and fewer redundancies in the process. In the short term, the job description really doesn't change a lot, because it will take time for the conversions and, and greater collaboration. It'll take time and maybe, and, and resources and training, so it's probably a three-year plan. The job description, and what I can do is send the current job description, which really, this one basically maintains all of the function of the current business manager role until we, but it will be working, this person would be working much more closely with the town person, but still retaining autonomy as being, working for the schools.
So why are we, why don't we make the licensure as a school business administrator preferred, not required? We're not hiring, because we may be able to expand our pool of applicants. So you can, obviously, the preferred would give some preference to people who have it, but we're not eliminating them. I understand that this is a name change mostly for now, but. I understand that this is a name change mostly for now, but let's be true to the name change and not require that sort of business license.
Good point, good point.
So, and then also, three to five years administrative financial experience in a school district, nonprofit organization, or other comparable, why don't we specifically list in a school district municipality? Would it be municipality, government?
I think municipality is probably good.
Thinking government, but yeah, municipality, municipality comma, nonprofit organization. Let's put school district, let's put municipality second as a somewhat optics. So someone who has town experience, who would know this world, not perfect, but would know this world much better than someone coming from a nonprofit.
Yeah, it's really cool. Other questions on the job description before we take a look at the process?
And it's effectively the same one that we had reviewed and signed off on before, you didn't change it much. Is it really just the title?
It is.
Okay, and then these couple little changes?
I did have an outside consultant take a look at it, and he thought the job description was quite good, so didn't see any, any need to change, change any of this, but I do like your suggestions.
So we will include the, we'll make those changes in, in the job description and post that up, because I think we all understand the importance of the, of this role in the district. So Nancy's put together a draft hiring process for the role, which includes school committee participation. So looking to see what, what if any questions or comments the group has on that.
So basically, in March, we would post the position and seek participants for the interview process. For some of our administrative roles, we've had a separate group of people, small group, do the paper screening of all the applicants to determine which of the applicants meet our minimum criteria. So there's a discussion about what those criteria are, and whether the applicants, one, have a full packet and have completed everything necessary for the application, and two, whether they meet our minimum qualifications. We can combine those and have that same, the interview group also be the paper screening group, or sometimes it's a commitment of time that some people might not be able to make to both, and we could separate that out. We then, you know, the interview process, I recommend that we keep the interview team to about ten, and I've suggested a breakdown of that, but it can be, we can alter those. This is truly very draft for your input.
So you're talking about a ten-person panel interview?
Yeah.
Have you hired other administrators with ten people?
How does the, is it, do they meet with like two or three people at a time, or is it all?
No, we do it in the, usually in the conference room, and people come in and we all, you know, prior to interviewing, we go over, we have sample questions from last time. I did get some good suggestions from our consultant to, some ways to ask things, to get a very in-depth knowledge, and so, and we welcome people who have that financial expertise to be part of the interview process. We do ask that if you commit to the interview process, usually there are six to eight people we might interview, if we're lucky, we would find that many highly qualified candidates. Do it during two afternoons, early evening, and, you know, we can, we can make it a smaller group, but actually, you know, if, especially if people don't have that time commitment.
And we, and you establish the questions and everyone gets asked the same exact questions?
Yeah, and we have, as, we worked on a lot last year, we have a very good hiring process manual that, and we also have worked with our legal counsel, Andy Wad, to provide us with guidance on questions you cannot ask, even, even chatting informally, which is the second phase of the interview process, that we always like to invite people. We usually do not find a site visit to their place of employment to be, to give us a lot of good information. It's, for lack of a better term, usually kind of a dog and pony show, but by inviting the, say there are two finalists to spend a good morning or an afternoon with us, and meet, and we pass them along and have them interact with all kinds of, everybody in the district that we can, invite teachers, invite others to maybe come have lunch with the candidate, that gets us a lot of, more of the real person, so we get a good sense of whether that's a good fit.
What's the proposed salary for this position?
What's in the budget, but we can, that can be looked at. We do not post, when we post in school spring, we don't post the salary.
I'm asking, I'm asking now, I, I know you're not gonna put it.
It's a hundred and twelve thousand in the budget, approximately, I think I, I think I can remember that correctly.
And the outside consultant feels that that's a salary that will attract candidates that, a good pool of candidates, is a sal, is that a sufficient salary?
Actually, did you ask him that?
I, I think we should, because we've.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't sure.
Consultant for the town, definitely, the person who's working with the town, financial consultant, definitely thought that was more than adequate, more than adequate.
All right.
I did not ask that of the other person.
If the town consultant's saying that, I mean, if you have another conversation with the person, ask, but if, if she is saying that she feels that it's adequate, because she's done a lot of work around municipalities, I think that's fine, if you have the opportunity, ask, but I don't think you should have to go out to ask the question.
Right, and it's commensurate with experience, so it may actually be less than that, but, you know, the, the offer made.
Sorry, I asked Nancy, and, and either one of you might know better than I do, but if we vote on the job description, I don't know if we've done that in the past.
I don't think we vote on a job, it's not a new job description.
Well, it is.
The title.
The title. And since the committee has, you know, a strong say in the hiring of this position, I, my opinion is it doesn't hurt to vote it.
No, it is a committee hire that reports to you.
Yes.
As Mass General Law states, and I know you checked, so, I'll, I'll, well, let's go through the formalities here.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
I'm just gonna let her.
I make a motion to approve the job description for the assistant's finance director for the Millis Public Schools as presented.
With the amendments.
With the, oh, with the, with the amendments of DSE licensure as school business administrator preferred, and three to five years administrative financial experience in the school district, adding municipality, then with the existing nonprofit organizations or other comparable workplace work setting required.
Second.
So moved and seconded, further discussion?
We're authorizing the superintendent to start the process as outlined, as soon as possible, so we can have someone here, hopefully by July one.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thank you Nancy. Okay, subcommittee reports, ESBC, so I don't know if you've, there have been multiple posts lately, some aerial shots of the site, to just give kind of some perspective as to the kind of progress that's being made, but foundations are being poured, and they continue to progress on time, even with the weather, so we're not taking too bad, that much of a hit. So I would encourage folks to keep an eye out for the two-week look-aheads that the ESBC posts on the town website, on the project website, on Facebook, and on the school district website. Again, those come out every two weeks and kind of give a two-week update for what's coming up in the next two weeks.
Madam Chair, do you think it'd be appropriate to send those out on our listservs as well? Or is, it's posted plenty of places.
I think, I think there's a high amount of listservs that come out.
Yeah.
So maybe for, maybe for now, I think as we get closer, so for now, I think the, that what, what the ESBC is pushing might be, might be adequate.
Sure.
As we get, as we, as we, certainly as we get closer to larger milestones, then maybe we leverage the listserv, but.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a good, good thought. Okay, correspondence?
Just, I've included some, you know, slight revisions to some of the timing of some of the topics for upcoming dates. I also have not added, but from here on out, whenever we get more solid information about revenue flowing in, either when the House and Senate change, hopefully, the budget a little bit at the state level or local, then we, you know, obviously, budget is a topic that we will be discussing from here on out until town meeting. Also, the flyer for Millis Safety Day, which is Saturday.
Oh, yeah. Mark has one question.
Just looking at this, looking at the April 24th, under the guise of it's the meeting right before town meeting, I'm perfectly, I love the learning showcases, but if we're gonna need to have a working session that night, I would ask that we either tamp down the presentation or move it, I, I guess I, I'm cognizant of if we have work, we, other budget work that we're gonna have to get through going into working session at 10 o'clock, like we're going to tonight, is a little late. So if we don't have any, and there's no budget work we need to worry about, going up to town meeting, then that's fine.
What if we move them to the third, could that happen on April 3rd?
I can check.
Because the presentations on the third are administrators who can move on the fly better than the kids, right?
Sure.
So we could, if the, if the kids are, if the teachers and, and students can do it on the third, that would give them their showcase, and then we could even sneak in one of the, a handbook or a curriculum update on top of that, and then do some other curriculum work and handbook work on the 24th, but give ourselves, if we need to go into a, a couple-hour conversation.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You brought it up, Mark, by the way.
Yeah, no, and I'm not even saying we have to, more just.
In case when you need it.
If we needed it to, to even, maybe not flip them and now try, if they can't, if they're not gonna be ready for April 3rd, since it's now March 20th, at least put them on notice that we may need to bump them if we, unless it's, you know, one or two, and it's, and we, you know, slot it for a half hour and, you know, go, which I'm not trying to jam it, but.
No, I know, I know, yeah.
I think, I think you're right that.
Our time of learning is never 20 minutes, we have it on the calendar, it's, it's on the, it's never 20 minutes.
I think you're right that the third might be hard, so I'll check if, to see if, maybe the eighth or the 22nd in May actually can work well. It kind of might go nicely with the digital learning strategic plan, so we'll work on that, on rearranging a little bit. Okay. And the, just an article that was in the International Spanish Academy Newsletter, monthly newsletter about our new building, and then Millis Safety Day, and we, it's a senior project by Ryan Locke, and we look forward to it, it's very much appreciated that we have such great collab, collaboration with the public safety, not only Millis Police and Fire, but the Council on Aging, the Board of Health, the Sheriff's Department, Norfolk County DA's office, and Millis Emergency Management, the Millis Chapter of MAD, which is, I think, Mothers Against Destructive Decisions or drunk driving, and the CDC. Thank you.
School committee announcements, Mr. Conroy?
I have none.
Mr. Catalano?
I'm all set.
Okay, I don't have any either. We are adjourned to working session, not to return on camera.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano?
I make a motion to adjourn to working session to discuss budget issues, not to return to open session.
So moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thanks, everybody, very much, our next meeting is Tuesday, April 3rd.